Welcome to the City of Bakersfield Planning Commission Meeting. This television broadcast is brought to you by the local cable companies, the County of Kern, and the City of Bakersfield. You can watch the rebroadcast of this meeting Saturday at 7:00 PM and Sunday at 10:00 AM. You can download the agenda for this meeting at www.bakersfieldcity.us. Presiding over this evening's meeting, Chair Daniel Kater.
Good evening. It is my pleasure to call to order the January 3, 2019 Planning Commission Meeting. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Commissioner Kater.
Here.
Commissioner Bell.
Here.
Commissioner Coleman.
Here.
Commissioner Lomas.
Here.
Commissioner Rudnick.
Here.
Commissioner Wade.
Here.
Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I have the Pledge of Allegiance to comply with the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice
Thank you for attending tonight's Planning Commission Meeting. This Commission provides an opportunity for public participation in the development process throughout the City of Bakersfield. The Planning Commission considers a wide variety of projects, including subdivision maps, zone changes, general plan amendments, and more. When applications are received, the City Planning Division analyzes the request. Planning staff will present the facts about the project along with their recommendation to the Planning Commission, who will approve the item or make a recommendation as appropriate. Our goal is to carefully consider each project and make a decision that will balance individual rights with public welfare and general well-being within our community. We will now receive public statements. This is our time reserved for anyone who wishes to address the Commission on a matter not on the Consent Calendar Public Hearings portion of the agenda. If you are here for items 5A through 5N, this is not the time to speak. Does anyone in the audience wish to address the Commission? If so, please come forward and state your name. Seeing no one come forward, we will now move on to Consent Calendar Non-Public Hearing Items. These agenda items typically involve housekeeping or administrative matters that do not require a public hearing. Does any Commissioner wish to remove a Consent Calendar Non-Public Hearing Item for separate If not, may I have a motion to adopt staff's recommendation on the Consent Calendar Non-Public Hearing Item 4A? Commissioner Wade.
Motion to adopt.
May I have a second?
I'll second.
Commissioner Coleman. Madam Secretary, this is a roll call vote.
Commissioner Kater.
Yes.
Commissioner Bell.
Yes.
Commissioner Coleman.
Yes.
Commissioner Lomas.
Yes.
Commissioner Rudnick.
Yes.
Commissioner Wade.
Yes.
We will now move on to the Consent Calendar Public Hearing Items. The next agenda section includes public hearing items that are considered routine or non-controversial. These items have been reviewed by staff and are conditioned in accordance with the requirements of the Bakersfield Municipal Code. Public Hearing Item 5K was opened during the December 6 Planning Commission Meeting. And I believe that item has been pulled from tonight's agenda and will be continued to the next meeting.
To the February 21st meeting?
To the February 21st Planning Commission Meeting. Item 5K. The Planning Director will read each of the items on the Consent Calendar to ensure that the public has an understanding of all items to be considered. If you would like to speak on an item, please come forward after the items are read and ask that the item be removed for discussion. If no items are removed by a member of the public or a Commissioner, the Commission will vote on all items together in one motion without further comment. Mr. Coyle, before starting, I would just like to state that I have a conflict with Item 5C and will be abstaining from voting. Mr. Coyle, please proceed with reading the agenda items.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and members of the Commission. In order to save some time tonight, I'm going to truncate Projects 5A through 5I by simply saying they are all extension-of-time projects, and the details are located on the screens behind you for members of the public and at your seats for members of the Commission. Moving on then to Project 5J is a vesting tentative parcel map, 12212, which is a proposal to subdivide 15 acres into six industrial parcels located along the south side of Taft Highway, State Route 119, and east of Hughes Lane. Project 5K is vesting tentative tract map 7335, which we have just heard is to be continued to the February 21st meeting. Project 5L is a zone change 18-0270, which is a proposal to change the zoning on 27 acres located along the south side of Stockdale Highway, approximately 1/4 mile east of South Allen Road, from an R1 Zone District to an R1CH combining Zone District. Project 5M is zone change 18-0386, which is a proposal to change the zoning on 10.59 acres located at the southwest corner of Stockdale Highway and Buena Vista Road, from a planned commercial development zone to a regional commercial slash planned commercial development combining zone. And finally, Project 5N is Plan Development Review Number 18-0385, which is a proposal to approve Plan Development Review for a mixed-use shopping center in a C2PCD district located on the southwest corner of Stockdale Highway and Buena Vista Road. This concludes my reading of tonight's agenda.
Thank you, Mr. Coyle. At this time, I will open all of the Consent Calendar Public Hearing Items. Is there anyone in the audience who wishes to speak on a Consent Calendar Public Hearing Item? Again, this is not the time to take testimony, only the time to request the item be pulled to the public hearing portion of the evening.
Hi, Scott Derrick Castle and Cook. Items M and M are the same project that we'd like you to pull for further discussion.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Andy Kelly, I live in River Oaks adjacent to those two projects, to that project that is one. I wanted to say the same thing.
Thank you. We'll move it to the public.
Ray Chabandarian, it's for M.
5M, yes. Thank you. Is there any other member of the audience wishing to pull an item off of the Consent Seeing no members of the audience, is there any Commissioner wishing to remove a Consent Calendar Public Hearing Item? Commissioner Coleman.
Yes, Item 5L, please.
5L. Thank you. Any other Commissioners wishing to pull any additional items? Seeing no other requests for public hearings, at this time, the public hearing on all Consent Calendar items, 5A through 5J, with 5K being extended to the February 21 Commission Meeting, and myself abstaining from Item 5C, are now closed. May I get a motion to adopt staff recommendation on the Consent Calendar Public Hearing Items, 5A through 5J? Commissioner Wade.
Motion to adopt staff's recommendation on those items.
Yes. May I have a second?
I second.
Thank you, Commissioner Bell. This is a roll call vote. Madam Clerk?
Commissioner Kater.
Yes.
Commissioner Bell.
Yes.
Commissioner Coleman.
Yes.
Commissioner Lomas.
Yes.
Commissioner Rudnick.
Yes.
Commissioner Wade.
Yes.
It is now time to hear the Consent Calendar Public Hearing Items removed from that portion of the agenda. Before we begin, I'd like to explain how hearings will be conducted. Staff will first give a more detailed report, then those in favor of the project will be allowed to speak. Those in opposition to the project will be able to speak after those in favor have spoken. Each side will then be given the opportunity to provide five minutes of rebuttal comments. Individual speakers may ask questions during their statements, but the questions will not be answered until the public hearing on that item is closed. Written comments may be given to the Clerk, who will provide copies to the Commission. Please be respectful of others participating in the hearing by not repeating the remarks of previous speakers and presenting any new comments or thoughts in a clear and concise Mr. Coyle, would you please provide us your staff report on Item 5L?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Zone change 18-0270, Paul Danen's architect representing Bridge Bible Church of the Mennonite Brethren. Project is located at 12225 Stockdale Highway, also being along the south side of Stockdale Highway, approximately 1/4 mile east of South Allen Road in northwest Bakersfield. The request is for a zone change on approximately 27 acres from R1, which is one-family dwelling, to R1-CH, one-family dwelling church overlay Zone District. The parcel is mostly developed with a church campus, which includes an approximately 13,500 square-foot multipurpose worship building, 11,150 square-foot classroom building, classrooms, a chapel, administration offices, and two parking lots. All of the existing church buildings and uses were approved by conditional use permit. The applicant has not submitted any specific plans for further development. The applicant has stated that the zone change is requested to allow the church to conform to the church overlay zone rather than a conditional use permit that was granted in 2007. If the church zone were to be approved, current and future uses on the subject property would be subject to the city's church zone overlay, which is found in Chapter 17.36 of the Municipal Code. The current church development is consistent with the proposed CH Zone. Staff has determined the proposed project will not significantly affect the physical environment or existing residential development in the area. Therefore, a mitigated negative declaration was prepared, and the initial study is attached as Attachment C of the staff report. Mitigation measures related to air quality, biological resources, and cultural resources are recommended. Staff finds that the zone change to establish one-family dwelling church overlay zoning for an existing church to continue its operation and activities on a 27-acre parcel is consistent with the general plan land use designation and compatible with the surrounding urban residential uses. Therefore, staff recommends approval of the zone change request, subject to conditions and mitigation measures outlined in the attached resolutions. This concludes my staff report.
Thank you, Mr. Coyle. The public hearing on this item is now open. Is there anyone in the audience who wishes to speak in favor of the project? Please step to the microphone, identify yourself, and proceed.
Hello, my name is Paul Danens. I'm representing the client on this project. If there's any questions, I'd be more than happy to answer those for you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in the audience wishing to speak in favor of the project? Seeing no one, is there anyone who wishes to speak in opposition to the project? So please step to the microphone, identify yourself, and proceed. Seeing no one, does any Commissioner have a question for the public on this item? Remember, this is not the time to express opinions on the matter, only time to ask Commissioner Coleman.
Thank you. We're experimenting with new technology, so please be patient. Mr. Danes, there is no plan, there is no site plan for this project at this time. You're just asking for the zoning change?
We have been working with the client to develop some planning, some potential planning options. At this time, those have not been submitted, but we can certainly work with council if that is a concern.
Currently, there's a, is there a modular office there on that site?
Yes.
Okay. And the plan would be that that would be, at some point, conceived will be removed and residential houses will be built in that section? Is that what the plan is?
That is not my understanding. It's all for church use. The mobile home or the modular building is for the church office now. So that could potentially be folded into a master plan scheme.
So is the intent to build a housing project there?
No, the intent is to continue building spaces to support the church.
I see. Okay. Thank you.
You're up.
Are there any other Commissioner questions? Seeing none, and as there was no speakers in opposition, I will now close the public hearing and return it to the Commission for comment and action. Are there any Commissioner comments? Commissioner Coleman.
No, I don't have any comments. I was just inquiring, so thank you for answering my questions. I have no further questions. If there are no other questions, I can make a motion to approve 5L Zone Change for Parcel 18, Project 18-0270.
Motion by Commissioner Coleman. May I have a second?
Second.
Commissioner Rudnick. Madam Secretary, this is a roll call vote.
Commissioner Kater.
Yes.
Commissioner Bell.
Yes.
Commissioner Coleman.
Yes.
Commissioner Lomas.
Yes.
Commissioner Rudnick.
Yes.
Commissioner Wade.
Yes.
Moving on to Item 5M, Mr. Coyle, would you please provide us your staff report?
Yes, sir. If you could just give me a few moments to advance the slides, please. Projects 5M and 5N both apply to the same property parcel project, so I would like to combine the two staff reports if I could. Plan Development Review 18-0385, as well as Zone Change 18-0386. Projects are being brought to us by KSA Group Architects, representing ABS Surplus OLLC. This is a new neighborhood shopping center generally located on the southwest corner of Stockdale Highway and Buena Vista Road in southwest Bakersfield. First, there is a request to change the Zone District from a planned commercial development zone to a regional commercial slash planned commercial development combining zone, which is a more restrictive zone, on 10.59 acres. A concurrent application for a Plan Development Review Number 18-0385, requesting approval for an approximately 74,000 square-foot mixed-use shopping center, site plans as shown below in Figure 2 of the staff report. And a separate staff report had been prepared for the Plan Development Review. Pursuant to the California Environmental Quality Act, an initial study was prepared for the original project, which was GPA Zone Change Number P99-0203 of the subject property, and a mitigated negative declaration was adopted on November 3, 1999. Staff finds that the mitigated negative declaration is adequate, and no further environmental review is needed. Mitigation measures from the related project addressing public services, traffic, biological and cultural resource impacts have been included in the attached resolution. However, pursuant to the California Fish and Game Code, Section 711-4, readoption of the mitigated negative declaration is necessary to effectuate the approval process for this project. Overall, staff finds that the applicable provisions of SEQA have been complied with, that the applicant has designed the project to cite commercial uses in a way that will be compatible with the residential land uses in the immediate surrounding area, and that the proposal sufficiently demonstrates compliance with the necessary findings pursuant to Section 17.54.070 of the Planned Commercial Development Chapter of the Bakersfield Zoning Ordinance. Last year, your Commission considered several comprehensive sign plans for commercial centers. At this time, the applicant does not propose any deviations from the sign ordinance. Therefore, all signs will comply with standards established by City Council. Should the applicant decide to deviate from the sign ordinance or expand onsite development in the future, your Commission will have the opportunity to review and comment under a separate review. A memorandum has been prepared to clarify a condition of approval regarding a prorata share payment of park fees for the park at Riverwalk. This memorandum is applicable to the Zone Change and Plan Development Review. Therefore, staff recommends that your Commission approve a C2PCD combining zone on the 10.59 acres and approve the mitigated negative declaration, and recommend the same to City Council. Staff further recommends that your Commission approve Plan Development Review Number 18-0385, as depicted in the project description, and subject to the listed mitigation conditions of approval, incorporating the Director's Memorandum dated January 3, 2019. This concludes my staff report on Projects 5M and 5N.
Thank you, Mr. Coyle. The public hearing on this item is open. Is there anyone who wishes to speak in favor of the project? If so, please step to the microphone, identify yourself, and proceed.
Derek Holsworth, KSA Group Architects. We've read the conditions, accept the conditions as they're presented, and I'm here to answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you. Is there anyone in the audience, anyone else in the audience wishing to speak in favor
Hello, I'm Michael Fitzgerald. I live about a quarter mile away from this property. I do walk just about every day around this property. I note that it's been a very long time. It looks like a very good project. I am in favor of it. I will tell you that the neighborhood website had a couple of concerns, and I don't know anybody up here yet who's actually come to voice them, and I'm not necessarily voicing them, but what I'm letting you know, that there was some talk on the neighborhood website or talking with neighbors. Number one, the drain, the storm drain sump just to the east, just to the west of this southwest corner of the property is a place where kitfox usually hang out. And they come underneath the fence, and they go across the street, and one of their food sources is the many, the hundreds of ground squirrels that exist on this property. Now, I know ground squirrels aren't protected species, at least I don't think they are, but they are a food source for the kitfox. The good news is kitfox eat a lot of things, and I know this from prior experience here with a zone change closer to where I live. So I don't think that's a big issue, because the kitfox can go into people's backyards and get the palm rats and get all sorts of things that they need to eat. So I just want to let you know, that is a concern. Another concern is the northwest corner of this property being a fast-food restaurant, the drive-through that goes wraps around the building. I think it has a three-foot wall going around it, or a three-foot barrier. And some people are concerned that the glare of the lights going around there might be a concern with the eastbound traffic on Stockdale. And so that's a possibility of a concern, and the noise, possible noise concern going across the street, river, parkway, to the immediate residents across there. The good news is, they have a six-foot wall on their side, so I'm not sure that's going to be an issue, but I just want to bring it to your attention. So they already have a six-foot wall over there. I don't think either noise or light would be a problem for them, but except for Stockdale's traffic coming down, coming at a pretty good rate of speed towards that intersection of Buena Vista and Stockdale. That might be an issue, I don't know, just that little section. And then people pointed out that the McDonald's just kitty-corner to this property has a six-foot wall around there, around their drive-through. But then again, on another kitty-corner, you have a bank, which is the Alta One Bank, and that has absolutely no barrier on their drive-through. They don't have any business right now, but still, I mean, there's nothing there. So I don't know if it's a consistency issue or if it matters. I don't know, just bringing it to your attention. Last thing is, that there is, in the research I had, an archaeological site associated with this site. And I don't know the number right now, but I did see that there's an archaeological site. I don't have access to that information, so I don't know how important that archaeological site may or may not be. This property does not have a soil cap on it, so when they go start digging in there, that may be a concern. But other than that, I think it's a great thing. I'm looking forward to having the convenience store with the gas station and the fast foods and whatever else you have retail, and the bank. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak in favor of the project?
Good evening, Honorable Chair, members of the Commission. My name is Jim Halfertie with Halfertie Development Company. We're the developers. I just want to let you know we're here tonight, so if there's a need for questions or discussion about any items, perhaps we could be helpful. Thank you for your consideration.
Any other speakers in favor? Seeing no one else, is there anyone who wishes to speak in opposition to the project? Please step to the microphone, identify yourself, and proceed.
Scott Derrick Castle and Cook. I want to make it clear that we're not here to oppose the project. However, what we would like to request is for the developer to have the same considerations of the investment the city has put in this intersection in Castle and Cook with the shop at Riverwalk in terms of landscaping setbacks, the way the drive-throughs are buffered or screened. The city has made a huge investment in the park and the amphitheater, and we just want to make sure that this intersection remains a good-looking, viable intersection, and it's not degraded. So again, we're not here to oppose the project, we just want the standards. Maybe the developer can, instead of meeting the minimum standard the city has, is go beyond that. And the speaker right before me mentioned about the McDonald's. I mean, that's a good example for screening traffic going through a drive-through, although it's not a six-foot wall. There's a combination of a berm, slope coming up, a little retaining wall, and then landscaping on top of that, so you don't get the effect of having traffic going through there all the time. So that was it. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else wishing to speak in opposition? Please step to the microphone, identify yourself, and proceed.
Andy Kelly, I live in River Oaks. Thank you for your time. I'd first like to point out that the- I'd first like to point out that the signage that is legally...
Oh, could you speak into the mic? Thank you.
Andy Kelly, I live in River Oaks. I'd first like to point out that the signage that is posted, which eight signs need to be posted to on each street, the signage reads C-two to C-two PCD, when it's really PCD to C-two PCD. For a layperson, after calling, planning, and talking to staff, it seems like an error was made by the developer, or his people, or their people, and was kind of like wading through soup to figure out what was going on. And I think that that alone needs to delay this. However, echoing Castle &amp; Cook, I forget his name, echoing Castle &amp; Cook, I live there, and I have lived there, and I will live there, but I live on the residential side, not the commercial side. And I'd like to applaud Castle &amp; Cook and the city for the way that area looks. Looking at the, the plan that I'm privy to, which another resident got from planning, it seems like the minimum standards are what the goal is here. From parking spots, to not putting in a basin, to pumping it, or pumping it, or, or gravity feeding the water that is inevitable to come off this site across the street, I'm less concerned about kitfox, because I think they'll have to do that, because there's too many laws on that one. I'm more concerned about mosquitoes, and whether or not that sump will be maintained by Bakersfield Water, whether or not it can handle the flow. That's a lot of parking lot, that's a lot of roof surface. Then moving on to landscape, there's no green walls, there's no berms, there's no, it looks like trees look to be all the same size. It looks like they're going to throw in a bunch of fifteen-gallon trees and call it good, whereas Castle &amp; Cook puts in forty-eights, and I think sixties, which are larger specimen, more expensive, immediate statement, buffer the neighborhood, buffer the project, break up the verticality, and they make it so that this might be able to integrate into a very fine neighborhood. I don't know if you drive the neighborhood or walk the neighborhood as, as we do, but this is a really nice neighborhood. River Run Boulevard, since Highgate has begun and is, is really going, and then the parkway, it's a freeway almost sometimes. Are we going to have truck traffic going down River Run, or is there going to be a covenant that they can't go down River Run? River Park has three egress and e, and ingress, whereas there's only one on the two main drags, which are Buena Vista and Stockdale, one each. So you have four on the side streets going into the neighborhoods, and you have two on the main streets. So looking at the project, it looks like any other project from any other place, anywhere else. And I guess, given that I live there, looking at it, looking that it doesn't appear like it's going to match what we're used to with Castle &amp; Cook, or with Carousella, or with Bold House, Carousella doing development and management, I think that the project needs more thought. I don't think that it should just go to planning, I think that they should have to jump through all the hoops. Go to City Council. I think it's a good project, but it needs to be improved for the neighborhood. Let's keep our values down, let's not have car accidents, not, let's not have 3:00 AM deliveries, so that everybody can get woken up. And I just hope that you'll consider the neighborhood on the residential side, as well as safety and the aesthetics of Stockdale Highway. Appreciate your time.
Good evening, Ray Shaw Bendarian. I'm a resident of the River Oaks area, been living there for eighteen-plus years. And in respect of your time, as you mentioned earlier, I do not want to repeat most of the things that the two speakers prior to me have mentioned, but I agree with everything that was said. Main concern here is if they go above and beyond the minimum standards, would be much appreciated. Everyone has done a great job of keeping the neighborhood safe, and all the things that need to be in place, so I would just ask for everyone to look into that, and help us as neighborhood there. We walk and enjoy the community, and I personally look forward to the development. I just want to make sure that all the things are in place. That's all. Thank you.
Any other member of the audience wishing to speak in opposition to the project? Seeing no one else, does any commissioner have a question for the public on this item? Please remember, this is a time to express, not a time to express any opinions on the matter, it's only a time to ask questions. Commissioner Coleman.
I'm sorry, this is the, the representative from Castle &amp; Cook. How many acres is the River Lakes, the River, River Lakes Shopping Center project that you currently have?
It's the Riverwalk Shopping Center, approximately forty-eight acres.
Forty-eight, that's from the McDonald's down to...
La Costa, BK, right.
Right. Oh, I, I was, I was only referring to the part up till, I guess it's the burger place Ria Rica Burger.
Oh. Yeah, the whole project is forty-eight acres, from Callaway to Buena Vista.
All right, thank you.
Commissioner Rudnick.
My question's for the developer. There's been some requests for landscaping increases. Is that something you could accommodate at this time?
Commissioner, thank you for, that was going to be my rebuttal remarks. Actually, I can agree with those who have stood in opposition to this, their conceptions, their perception of this project tonight. We will, our, our plan is, we're very impressed with the Riverwalk Shopping Center, and we think it sets a very high bar and a very high standard that we intend to meet. I don't even think we could be commercially successful if we didn't meet that standard. So we will have, we have excessive landscape, we have twenty-five percent more landscape in, in this project than is already approved by the City Council that, that the planning director spoke about a few minutes ago. So yes, we will have excessive landscape, and I'm also here to say that we hear the concern about the, the drive-through driveways, and the, the light that may be emitted, even though we think they will be behind landscape berms. And we can do a similar treatment to the drive-through, particularly on that one, one on the corner that they're concerned about, that you have on the McDonald's project. I think that's well-executed, and we're happy to do that. We believe in the standards that have been set by Castle &amp; Cook, we think they've done a terrific job. We know we have to meet those expectations to satisfy not only the neighborhood, but to attract the retailers that we need to our project. Any other questions I can...
No, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Wade.
Cancel.
Oh, thank you. Commissioner Loomis.
I was wondering if Representative from Castle &amp; Cook or Roger could tell us where they see that this is lacking, that isn't, what's being proposed this evening doesn't come to the standard of, of a Castle &amp; Cook project.
Scott there, Castle &amp; Cook. The only thing that I've seen is a, a site plan, so I haven't seen the detail. So again, you know, being up here today was, I'm not here to oppose the project, but to request that the, you know, planning commissioners, you know, look at what's been already done out there, invested both the city and, you know, Castle &amp; Cook and others, to, to make sure the curb appeal is, is still the same. And if that, you know, make sure the, the, you know, building setbacks, and, you know, drive-through screenings. So to, to answer your question, if there's anything, you know, specific, particular, I haven't seen the details, just a, a, a site plan on an eight-and-a-half-by-eleven sheet of paper.
Derek Holsworth, KSA Group Architects. Let me just say that when we started this project, I'm, Castle &amp; Cook is also a client of ours, and we've done work for Castle &amp; Cook, so I understand the issues. We feel like that we have taken every effort to not necessarily reproduce, but be consistent with the Riverwalk shops, with shops at the Riverwalk, in terms of the landscaping, in terms of the setbacks. As you know, the city has a brand-new landscape ordinance, and that, that is way more restrictive than it used to be, and it's our intention that we would meet all those requirements. So I, I don't know that I agree with the characterization that this project is a minimum We, we have gone, there's a water feature involved, there's a substantial pedestrian plaza in front of the main shops, there's lots of integrated concrete, and colored concrete in the center itself, there's, the parking lot is overshaded, so I, I think we've done that, and I think it's consistent with the, with the center that's there. So, thank you.
Thank you. I just had one question for staff, but I think that Mr. Holsworth might have just answered it. This, this project does fall under the, the revised landscape ordinance that was just enacted, correct?
No, it does not. They had submitted their application prior to the effective date of the new landscaping ordinance.
Okay, thank you.
Derek Holsworth again. Actually, that is true, technically, but it's our, but we, we tried to get a copy of the upgraded ordinance before we submitted, and we couldn't get it in time. But it's our intention to meet that requirement. We're, we're not going to try to skimp on that, so, thank you.
All right. Commissioner Coleman.
This is a question for staff regarding the traffic. Did, was there no objection to the traffic plan there for, you know, the only way to access this site coming westbound on Stockdale? Not the only way, but a common way will be to make that either a left or a U-turn at River Park? And has, has any traffic study been done on this, and is this project acceptable to this traffic department?
I'll defer to our traffic engineer, Ravi.
Good evening, Commissioners and the Chair. You know, we've looked into the site, you know, the site plan. We have, you know, the, the site is, the area is widened to the ultimate location, you know, Stockdale Highway, the west, eastbound direction and the westbound direction, there, they have the ultimate lanes, and the, the deceleration lane is, has been provided, so we have no issues for the access, and also the trips.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Loomis.
Just a point of order, and we kind of skipped past the rebuttal period, and the applicant has spoken twice, and I've, I see someone in the audience that wants to speak against the project, so should we have a rebuttal period?
We, we should grant more time, to be fair, since the applicant has had extra airtime. I think that would be the right thing to do.
Okay. Grant more time to the, the opposing side?
Thank you for letting me come back. Andy Kelly, again, from River Oaks. It seems like we're focusing on two things, the main streets and landscape. We're going to live on the backside of this project. The fortunate thing for Castle &amp; Cook is, with their beautiful projects, they butt up to park or bike trail. This project butts up to neighborhood, existing neighborhood, it's an infill project. And my concern, again, isn't so much about a decelerization lane, which is obviously necessary, because people drive sixty-sixty-five on Stockdale, both directions right there. Why do we have so many people being directed out into the neighborhood? Why three on River Run, which is a side street, and one onto River Park, uh, River, River Run Boulevard, and three onto River Park, where we have two onto the main drags? Is that simply because it's convenient, and we don't need to have more traffic lights, which people don't like to stop at traffic, traffic lights right after stopping at one? I don't know, but it seems like we should mitigate that by eliminating one or two on River Park. It, it seems like it's directing the flow out of that project into the neighborhood, and people tend to go to fast food, they go through the drive-through, then they pull away, and then they throw all the trash in the nearby neighborhood. It's, I've done landscape projects for projects like this in like nine counties, ten counties. I would want, since they're not, the developer is not currently required to meet the new standards, that this be put into their agreement formally, because just saying it now doesn't necessarily mean that it will happen later, not to smudge their reputation, but experience tells. Also, this, this project plunked down into this neighborhood needs more input, it needs more meetings, it should not be allowed to kind of be greased through planning. Developers are in, they, yes, they develop, and we all need developments, but they're here to make money. They're from out of town. I guess I have a bias against out of town, and I guess I'll say it here. I too have only seen the eight-and-a-half-by-eleven, but you can count the tree count on the, on the outside, or what I'm calling the backside of this project. You can look at the ancillary items that are put in, and it's kind of like, whoop, there's your project, as opposed to blending this and integrating this into the neighborhood. It just doesn't seem like it's integrated. It seems like it was thrown up, and it landed there. And unfortunately, we'll have to live with it until we either move, or go on to meet our maker. So I appreciate your, your time here again. Thank you.
Mr. Egger, the request for additional time kind of threw me off. Are we now in the rebuttal period?
Yes, so now we'll start the rebuttal period.
Okay, yes, thank you. Adam Clerk, if you could start the clock. We are now going to provide five-minute rebuttal period. Please note, this is five-minute total time for the, those in favor of the project, and five minutes in total to those in opposition to the project. We will start with those in opposition to the project, and then move on to those in favor.
At your pleasure, but since the person in opposition just spoke, it may flow a little better to have those in favor speak first, just recommendation.
Sounds good to me. Mr. Egger, thank you. Would those in favor wish to speak? Adam Clerk, please start the clock.
Derek Holsworth, KSA Group Architects. I think we pretty much said what we'd like to say. If the commission would like to add conditions to this to include the partial wall around the drive-through, and the condition that we comply with the new updated ordinance, we don't have any issues with that.
The clock is running, so if anyone else wishes to speak in favor, please step to the mic, identify yourself, and proceed.
Hello, Commissioners, Chairman. This is Bob Swanson, Swanson Engineering, I'm the civil engineer on the project. One question I'd like to address on the entrances to this project, we would like to get more entrances on Stockdale and Buena Vista, but by city ordinance and standards, it does not work with our turn lanes, so we're limited to one in on each street. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else wishing to speak in favor during the rebuttal period? Seeing no one else, we close the rebuttal period for those in favor, and move on to rebuttal for those in opposition. Again, five-minute total time to speak, and is there anyone wishing to speak in opposition, provide rebuttal in opposition to the project? provide rebuttal in opposition to the project? Seeing no one, I guess we will now move to close the public hearing, close the public hearing, and return the item to Commission for comment and action. Commissioner Coleman.
Thank you, Mr. Cader. First of all, I wanted to thank the members of the community that came out to talk about this project this evening. I know with the holiday and all that, you know, it made it difficult for folks to get here, but I appreciate you coming out and talking about this project. I wanted to explain a little bit that the staff recommendation that to approve the project is based on that the project meets a certain minimum level of requirements that are set in the planning and building codes, and the staff is generally tasked with ushering these projects through in order to be developer-friendly, community-friendly, they're not really there to oppose projects, they're designed to keep the projects on track, but they don't comment on the fit, the form, the function of the projects. And this Commission also prides itself in being developer-friendly, in other words, we try not to build in obstacles for developers to complete projects in our community, and oftentimes, we'll sit here at this meeting and we'll negotiate with the developer, can you change this, can you fix that? Unfortunately, with being developer-friendly, sometimes that stings us, and I really feel like, this is, I can comment now, right? All right, thank you. I feel like this is one of those cases. I've kind of wrestled this project for a couple of weeks since it first came on the radar, and I, at first, I would say that, I thought, well, if the project was built somewhere else, that we might say, hey, go forth and build, but as I look at it more in the land usage on here, I'm not so sure I would do that. I got to say that, to me, this project fails to capture the essence of what we've been trying to do on Stockdale Avenue or Highway, and in Bakersfield in general. This project is directly across the street from River Lakes Park, which is the crown jewel of the West, that's, you know, the thing we've been building to. And this is a premium property with a lot of potential, and it's the last significant parcel of land in that area, and we're presented with four, three fast-food restaurants, another drive-through, and a gas station, and I just don't feel like this captures what we've been trying to do on that stripper road. You know, if we don't do the right thing now, we're going to be stuck with this for the next 50 years, and so I want to be sure that we do the right thing here. I don't feel like this is designed as a destination shopping center, I didn't get a feeling that there was a lot of walking areas, public space, those kind of things. You heard me ask, I'm sorry, the gentleman from Castle &amp; Cook about the acreage there, because he has 48 acres over there, and he has two drive-throughs, this is a 10-acre parcel with four drive-throughs. I struggle with that a lot. This zoning change gives us an opportunity to have a little bit more input into the project and set conditions and restrictions. And I thought really hard about, you know, what kind of conditions and changes we could ask for to make this project palatable, to me. And I got to say that there are too many, you know, there's the setbacks, there's the open space, there's the walls of drive-through, there's a number of drive-throughs, a number of fast-food restaurants. I just don't feel like this project was as well thought out and presented as it may, as it may, could have been. Personally, I don't see any compelling reason to change the zoning here. If we're going to change the zoning to CP2, I think I got that right, I'd like to see a compelling project to make us change that. Like I said, I have an issue with the number of fast-food in the drive-throughs, I have the issue with them being on Stockdale, I don't think that's compatible with what we've been doing along Stockdale Highway. I have a problem with the lack of setback on the corner of Stockdale and Buena Vista. I have a problem with the walkability, I don't feel like this is a walking, I don't feel like this is a destination shopping center, I feel like it's a piece of land used for cars to drive in and out of the fast-food restaurants, and I don't feel like people are going to walk to this shopping center, they're going to enjoy the shops and that kind of thing in this little area. If you look at Arterson Square, at Brim Hall, and Allen, and some of the other projects, I may have said that wrong, I apologize, along, the other projects along Stockdale, I just don't feel like this is compatible with those. That's it.
Thank you, Commissioner Coleman, next, Commissioner Wade.
Thank you, Chair. This is directed towards staff, there was, Mr. Kelly mentioned that he didn't believe that this project was noticed properly, can you address that concern for us, please?
Well, I was not aware that there was a misprint on the public notice, so I would have to look into that and see what the ramifications are of a misprint on a public notice.
It's wrong?
If it was wrong, I would say it was a noticing issue, and we perhaps should re-notice it with the correct zoning designations, but we can wait and see kind of what the feel of the motion is tonight, and decide how to approach that.
Okay, so, we're not doing this all for naught, I mean, are we going to, are we, should we progress if the thing has to be re-noticed?
I'll leave it up to you guys, we've, I mean, we've had some discussion, and I don't know which direction you're going, but if the project is leaning towards being denied, I think it would be no harm, no foul on the noticing, but if, I don't think we should approve it tonight if the noticing was in fact an issue, like if that is what was posted on there, I've not seen it, but if it was, it does, it could be misleading to the public.
Okay, well, in that case, I'll just proceed with stating my opinion, and then depending how things turn out, I guess we'll go from there. I think that it's our job to consider things like the well-being of the public, and how planning pertains to that, that development that's done is done in a smart way, that promotes the kind of quality of life that we have here in Bakersfield. That being said, we also need to respect the rights of the property owner, and we have, we have a lot of control legally over what's done here, but when we start talking about things like, I think there's too many drive-throughs, or micromanaging parts of the project, I think we go too far. I think it's right for us to talk about just the general, the scale of the landscaping, the quality that we're working towards, and I think that some of those issues were addressed by the developer to a sufficient manner. With those concerns addressed, I'd be in favor of this project. I think if we start micromanaging too much here, we're infringing on property rights, and we then are not a pro-development council, particularly if there's a compromise that's been met.
Thank you, Commissioner Wade. Commissioner Lomas.
I did drive by the project, and it is not noticed correctly, so we will have to address that. My thought is, at this point, is the developer has heard, and I don't know if this is possible, I'll defer back to counsel, or staff for this, the developer has heard the concerns of the neighborhood, and the concerns of the landscape, and my, what I would like to see, and I don't know if it's possible, is that we have to re-notice, you have to come back, I believe, and come back with a better site plan, one that better demonstrates your intent on the landscape, and quite frankly, I don't really have a problem with the drive-throughs because the, where they are placed, they're placed on Stockdale, they're not placed on the neighborhood side, so I don't have a problem with those. So, I would like to see a better landscape plan that better demonstrates what your intent is, and size of trees, I know that's been a big discussion in past projects. I also want to ask a question of staff, I should have asked it during the other period, but we, there was a revision to the sign ordinance, but Stockdale Highway and Truxton, by my little memory here, had a different sign ordinance. Is that still in place?
Sign or landscaping?
Sign, I know I skipped over to sign, but it had a different standard.
Yeah, the sign ordinance that we recently updated was more for non-commercial signs, so it wouldn't really affect this particular project.
Stockdale, and so if staff could research that for when we come back, Stockdale was on a higher bar on signage, as long with Truxton, by my memory, so that was brought up this evening. So, some of these pieces that were brought out, I think we can use this little bit of time to the advantage, and get a win-win for everybody, because they're not really seeing opposition to the development and the project, they just want assurances that it's a nice project, so I think taking this time might be wise. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Lomas. Commissioner Rudnick.
I think it's a nice project, there are some things I do agree with, Commissioner Coleman, that Stockdale Highway in that area is really kind of a upper scale, if that's the proper wording, and I think with the density of your fast-food drive-through restaurants, you kind of are taking it down a notch, and I can appreciate the fact that those are highly valuable per square foot commodity, but we are the guardians of design and the environment that, you know, gets created, and I would like to see possibly a reduction of one of those sites, or re, just something where it's not as dense on Stockdale Highway in that regard. That's probably my main comment, I guess another comment would be the three ingress and egress points on River Parkway, is there a way to eliminate one of those, to help the neighbors with their issue of traffic? Yeah, I don't know if the city has worked on that concept or not, but that was a legitimate concern, I think, the neighbors do have, and obviously, the project has to flow, but if there can be an accommodation to the neighborhood, I would, I would like to see that as well. That's my comments, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Rudnick. Seeing no other Commissioner comments at this time, I...
Chair Cader, if I could, since it sounds like it's kind of a mixed house, and I think I'm hearing everybody, a good motion could be to refer this item back to staff for re-noticing for a future planning commission hearing, that way, it gets noticed properly, maybe some of these other things can be addressed in the conditions, and they come back to you as a better package, and then when we hear it again, if, you know, same issues could come up, you guys can vote on it then.
Yes, I think that sounds good. I do think, though, there's value in, I was going to give my comments, and I think there is value in, we've had a variety of comments and a variety of opinions, and so I think providing a little bit more direction as far as what are, I mean, I think we've thrown a lot at the developer, and so, I think using this time, as Commissioner Wade stated, to be a benefit to that extra time that's allotted.
I agree, I agree with you.
But I agree that postponing it soon, or re-noticing it so that proper notice is given. Commissioner Coleman, I see you speaking, but I'm going to give my comments first, and then, just because, yeah. I think this is a really great piece of property in the Southwest, and I think part of what makes it great is the city's invested a lot on this intersection, the work that's done to the Riverwalk Park, and the work, the public improvements that were made to that, really allow this property to shine in a way that I think the zoning of a PCD, the maximum public input, is somewhat a trade-off to being positioned in such a great, kind of civic space. I agree with Commissioners, I would state that there was a landscape plan included in our package, and it's pretty explicit about tree size and species, so, yeah. I have not memorized the new landscape standards, but it is a combination of 24-inch boxes and 36-inch boxes, but, and a four-foot hedge around the drive-louts, so, but I would, I would agree in encouraging the developer to comply with the upgraded landscape standards, now that they've been worked through, now that a copy can be given, it sounds like that is not really an issue. One concern I would like to bring up is this being somewhat of a neighborhood project and adjacent to a very active city park, the pedestrian circulation element within the site plan, to me, is a little bit convoluted, and I would like, I think, looking at kind of the central path gesture that just sort of stops at an intersection of a drive aisle, you know, if you follow a pedestrian path going from Building 4 to Building 3, you know, it seems like the layout was really contingent on the number of drive-throughs, and not the, how somebody would move through the site, and so I would encourage, going back, to take a look at the pedestrian circulation, I know that the, this falling under the large retail development standards, one of the, one of the ideas behind that is to promote walkability, pedestrian connectivity, and so I would encourage kind of a more discernible and more direct paths connecting the different parcels. And I think those were my comments, and I believe, Commissioner Coleman, you have canceled your speech, okay, so I will return it to Commissioner Coleman for a motion, unless there's any other Commissioner comments. Seeing none, Commissioner Coleman.
Thank you. I would consider that a just compromise, to return this to staff for further review, encourage the developer to work with staff, to try to mitigate some of the concerns that the public had, and what you heard from the Commission, so I would make a motion to return this to staff for further review.
Thank you, Commissioner Coleman. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Commissioner Rudnick. Madam Clerk, this is a roll call vote.
Commissioner Cader?
Yes.
Commissioner Bell?
Yes.
Commissioner Coleman?
Yes.
Commissioner Lomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Rudnick?
Yes.
Commissioner Wade?
Yes.
Thank you, that concludes the public hearing portion of our agenda tonight, moving on to communications, Mr. Coyle.
First of all, Mr. Chairman, and members of the Commission, I'd like to wish you a Happy New Year, as well as members of the public who came out for our first public hearing in 2019. We had 14 items on the agenda, so we got off to a good start this year. We had 14 items on the agenda, so we got off to a good start this year. We will meet as a commission on January 17th, two weeks hence, at 5:30 here in City Council chambers, and the work will continue. So, that's all I have, Mr. Chair. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Coyle. Are there any commissioner comments? Seeing none, I will adjourn the meeting at 6:40. Thank you. Have a good evening.[1710.58]